Good evening, everyone. It is 6:34 and I am calling to order this September 26th meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission. And if we could get a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Chafe.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Vice Chair Henme.
Here.
Chair Wax.
Here.
And just for the record, I'll note that future Commissioner Maya Small will be sworn in as the next item. Future Commissioner Robert Rivera was unable to attend tonight and will be sworn in at the next commission meeting. And you do have a quorum.
Excellent. Moving on to the first item, Commission Matters 3.1, swearing in of new Planning Commissioner Robert Rivera and Maya Small.
Great, thank you, Chair Wax. As I mentioned, we'll be swearing in Commissioner Rivera at the next meeting. So I'd like to ask Maya Small to please stand up and raise your right hand. And I think you, there you go, you have the script there. So, and then just repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Maya Small, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
As a Planning Commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
As a Planning Commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
Thank you. Welcome, Commissioner Small.
Commissioner Small, if you would like to take a moment at this time to introduce yourself?
My name is Maya Small. I'm a resident of the Emeryville Planning Commission. I'm very, very happy to be here in the Westbury's group. And I do have the background of art picture, painting, drawing, all the long, you know, I am very, very happy.
Thank you so much. Moving on to public comment, now is the time for general comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Any members of the public who wish to speak will have three minutes. In order to do so, you can speak by walking up to the podium or raising your hand. Seeing no public speaker, I'm going to close public comment. Now we're moving on to approval of the action minutes for June 27th, 2024, first. And move the minutes to be approved.
I'll second that.
All right, can we get a vote?
Thank you. On the motion by Vice Chair Henme, seconded by Commissioner Chafe to approve the June 27th, 2024 minutes, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Small.
Can I, please, vote up here for that?
Hi, Commissioner Small. I'm sorry, I should have jumped in before Chad did the roll call, but you're welcome to vote on the minutes just to, it's just an affirmation that the minutes accurately reflect what occurred at the meeting and you can rely on your colleagues' representations that they've done. So, thank you.
Yeah. Vice Chair Henme.
Aye.
And Chair Wax.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item six, approval of action minutes of August 22nd, 2024.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Chafe to approve the August 22nd, 2024 minutes, Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Small.
Aye.
Vice Chair Henme.
Aye.
And Chair Wax.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven, the Community Development Director's report.
Thank you, Chair Wax. First, a recap of City Council actions since your last meeting. On September 3rd, the council appointed committee members, including Commissioner Small and Commissioner Rivera and several other committees. The council did a proclamation for former City Manager Paul Budenhagen's service and also appointed Adam Palter as our interim City Manager. The council accepted the Quiet Zone project as fully complete, formally closing that out. The council approved the license with Bay Area Community Services for the temporary use of 4300 San Pablo Avenue. That is the project for which this commission approved a use permit at its August meeting. And the council also approved a noise waiver for the Nellie Hannan Gateway Project at 3600 San Pablo Avenue. That's an affordable housing project in which the city is a participant. And then finally, the city council approved the acquisition of 1245 Powell Street, which is an item that this commission approved the general plan conformity finding at its June meeting. On September 17th, the council held a study session on the local hazard mitigation plan, which you're also going to have this evening. The council adopted the first reading of the ADU amendments, which you approved at your August meeting. And the council authorized the execution of five agreements in connection with the Amtrak station properties, which is a major milestone in a complicated transaction that dates back to the early 90s. Events and announcements, the Bay Street held a ribbon cutting for the grand opening of the plaza work next to the grocery store, proposed grocery store, on September 19th. And the coastal cleanup was held on September 21st, thanks to Counter Culture Coffee for sponsoring that event. In the future events that are coming up, there's an Emeryville Pride event at Public Market on Saturday, the 28th, this Saturday, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. There will be an art exhibition at the Rotten City Cultural District Headquarters that's going on now with artist Michael Murphy on Tuesdays through Sundays, 5:00 to 8:00 PM until October 6th. The Harvest Festival is October 5th from 11:00 to 4:00, and it's going to be a large event. There's something like 60 vendors signed up for this and a lot of fun activities, including axe throwing, which I'm very excited to see. And then last but not, certainly not least, is the annual art exhibition, the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts. Opening night for that is Friday, October 4th at 6:00 PM at the Public Market in the former Urban Outfitters space. There's a lot of stuff going on, all of it fun. This concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director. Do we have any questions from the commission?
Thank you. I have one question about the property on Powell Street, the acquisition. What are the next steps for that?
So, the next steps are, that property, we are set to close in mid-January. And then we'll commence the process of remediation. There's some environmental remediation that that needs to happen. That process could, could take some time. Once we have that better identified and handled on that, then, then we'll begin the process of planning the park expansion.
And that's an auto repair shop?
Yes, currently, it is a, yeah, auto repair shop.
Do you have any sense of how long the remediation would take before it's appropriate for park use?
Not at this point, I don't. I actually, yeah, if you asked me that tomorrow, I probably would, because I have a call with our environmental consultant tomorrow. But I don't have a good handle on that quite yet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, closing that item, disclosure of ex parte communications and identification of conflicts of interest. Do we have any commissioners who have anything to disclose? All right then, moving on to public hearings, 9.1, Tesla Collision Center. Who do we have?
Moving from the top. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alyssa Chung. I am the Assistant Planner here in Emeryville, and I will be presenting today on a major conditional use permit application for a Tesla Collision Center located at 1295 67th Street. All right, so this is the project location. As you can see, it has two street frontages, one on 66th Street and one on 67th Street. It is adjacent to Liquid Sugar Condos and also close to City Limits Condos and the Emeryville Greenway, as well as Jasei, which is a Japanese-American community center across the street. This is a picture of the 66th Street frontage. There has been other property improvements done to the site in the past year, done as minor design review. So that's the context for this photo. And then here are some of those improvements, which include a gated fence. And then here is the 67th Street frontage as well. And then 67th Street frontage as well. This is more on the east side of the property. So there is an existing 47,000 square foot building on the site. The Tesla Collision Center would be occupy that existing building. They would not add to the square footage, and they would remove an existing mezzanine in the space that I believe is around 13,000 square feet. So the Tesla Collision Center would be considered a repair and service use under the category of motor vehicle sales and services. This is considered a use of special concern, which is why it is being reviewed as a major conditional use permit. The type of work that would occur there is light and heavy collision work on Tesla all-electric cars. This might include repair and replacement of parts, including replacement of batteries and tires as needed. As noted in the staff report, and as will be discussed later in this presentation, Tesla would also propose including a spray booth for painting of full-on panels as part of their scope of work. They would have accessory office and employee areas, storage, and several car rentals as well, primarily focused on providing rentals to clients who have dropped off their, their vehicles. No exterior changes are being considered under this conditional use permit, and anything like that, including exterior equipment and signage, would require further design review. The Collision Center's proposed hours of operation would be between 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday to Friday. Customer-facing portions of the operations would begin at 8:00 AM and would end at 5:00 PM. Per day, Tesla anticipates up to 50 employees, 10 to 15 pre-scheduled appointments made online, approximately two walk-in appointments unscheduled, six vehicle rentals, and one delivery from a medium-sized truck, which would load off-street on the 67th property side. Here's the proposed site plan. So you can see the 67th Street is on the left side, 66th on the right. So there would be, the customer-facing side of the property would be on 67th Street. So that is the side that customers and loading vehicles would come in to drop off vehicles and take out rentals. And then employee parking, as well as temporary vehicle storage, would be on 66th Street, as well as storage and waste bins. Here is a look at the proposed interior. So the majority of the space would be the service area with up to 29 service bays in total. There would be an office staff area and a storage area located on the 67th side. As part of the scope of this conditional use permit, we are requiring that the applicant provide public improvements on both sides of the street. So on 66th Street, we are requiring that they provide at minimum a six-foot sidewalk that meets city requirements, as well as a two-foot landscaping strip located along the property line. We are also requiring that they replace two existing red oak trees on the east and west side of that property frontage with new medium-sized trees recommended by our city arborist, which is Swamp Molly. On 67th Street, we are also requiring that they provide a continuous city, or a continuous six-foot sidewalk that does meet city standards as well, as well as two new trees, elegant water gum. The difference in trees is being proposed because there is an above-ground power line on 67th Street. Undergrounding it is not in the scope of this work. So we want to ensure that the, the trees don't grow and conflict with those power lines. So these public improvements would require an encroachment permit. They would also require a street tree removal permit, which is not included in the scope of the use permit today, but which would come back to Planning Commission for your approval. So here's the public improvements on 66th Street. So you can see the landscaping strip up against the property line, as well as the streetscaped area with the two locations of the new trees circled in red. So you can see in those bottom photos that the two trees to the right are the red oak trees. They've been over there for a decade. The full-grown trees there as well are red oaks and have grown successfully. These ones have not. So we are asking them, for them to be replaced with ones that will grow appropriately. On 66th Street, you can see again the six-foot sidewalk, as well as in red, the location of these new, two new proposed trees. And then here is the landscaping plan. So you can see the two types of trees being proposed, as well as the proposed landscaping on 66th Street. The landscaping would be required to meet our water-efficient landscaping ordinance, as well as our tree planting requirements, including appropriate soil volumes for a medium-sized tree. We also requested that the applicant perform a traffic analysis, and we do have the traffic consultant available if you have specific questions regarding this. The traffic consultant did do a analysis of existing traffic on the streets on July 9th of this year, and noted that on 66th Street, there's about 1,200 average daily trips, and on 67th Street, there were approximately 2,400 average daily trips. They then referred to an existing Tesla Collision Center located in Pomona as the, the way to estimate possible traffic generated at this Collision Center, and approximated there may be up to 416 trips per day, 38 of which may occur in peak morning hours, and 54 which may occur in peak PM hours. They then compared this to existing uses currently on the site, light industrial, which currently they're estimating there's approximately, the existing use generates approximately 231 trips per day. The argument of this transportation review is that this increase compared to the existing traffic on the streets, which is 185 new trips, is negligible and would not create further traffic impacts. In addition, we requested other trip generation information for other uses that are permitted by right or with a minor use permit in the light industrial zoning district. So manufacturing, as well as R and D, are such uses. And you can note a similarity in the number of trips generated by such uses. In addition, we requested that they do a queue analysis for the gating, gated parking lot on 66th Street, which would predominantly be used by employees. And in their analysis, they determined that the gated lot, which would be triggered by an intercom, would not create a queue that blocks existing lanes of traffic or the sidewalk. You can see here the, the directions and flows of traffic and types of traffic that would be coming in. In terms of conformity to the planning regulations, this is in the light industrial zoning district, as well as the north Hollis overlay. There would be no changes to the floor area ratio. There would be no changes to the building height. No parking is required, but, sorry, give me one second. But an existing 39 parking spaces would be maintained, and six parking spaces of the existing would be removed. So there's currently 45 on the site. They would provide six short-term bicycle parking spaces and three long-term bicycle parking spaces. And then they would provide one medium off-street loading space. We did receive public comments regarding potential environmental effects of this project on the 24th and 25th. These concerns were predominantly about air quality, noise, and other environmental impacts on nearby residential and community uses. So we just want to briefly go over some of those concerns and explain how the project, at a local level and at a larger regulatory level, would be required to address them. So in terms of air quality, the predominant issue with air quality for a Collision Center is related to paints and solvents used, so paint stripping and new surface coatings. So as mentioned, the Collision Center would include a spray booth for painting panels. As also noted, it would be all-electric vehicles, so there would be no combustible engines running at the site. So within the conditions of approval, we have really three specifically that apply here. We have a pretty general one that requires compliance with state law. We have one that requires compliance with our performance standards, including ones related to noxious materials and air quality. And then we have one specific to the project that requires the applicant demonstrate that appropriate air quality permits have been obtained from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District for the paint booth. So spray booths in general are, as well as the use of paints and solvents, are subject to a number of local, state, and federal standards. So again, we have the city performance standards, which specify that noxious materials cannot, have to be mitigated in such a way that they don't leave the property line of, of that use. At the building permit phase, we require that the applicant disclose all onsite equipment, and during inspection, confirm that that onsite equipment meets appropriate testing standards. The spray booth would also require a permit to operate from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, where they would disclose the quantity and methods in which they would use paints and solvents. The California Fire Code and California Medical Code also include thresholds related to fire safety for exhaustis charge airflow. And the EPA has an auto body rule that would apply to this, a new Collision Center, and that relates to pollutants for paint stripping and surf and service coating. It requires that the applicant provide an EPA-compliant management plan, as well as EPA-compliant equipment. As relates to noise, the proposed use would have hours between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, which does comply with our noise ordinance. The repair work would occur entirely indoors with closed doors. Again, our performance standards would continue to apply to this project, and we have included a specific condition of approval around the hours of operation, which is consistent with what our city's noise ordinance requires for auto repair and loading types of uses. So that's the limitations of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, no earlier and no later. As regards hazardous waste, the proposed use may include battery replacement, as well as temporary battery storage onsite. Performance standards would apply. We also require at the building permit phase that a trash recycling and composting plan be submitted and reviewed by both planning and public works. And they must also demonstrate that hazardous materials and waste are being treated according to local, state, and federal hazard materials regulations. So that includes storage disposal and movement of those universal wastes. In addition, the, any storage of hazardous waste must meet Alameda County Fire Department and California Fire Code standards for storage onsite. So this project is considered exempt from environmental review under CEQA, because it involves minor alterations to existing facilities and structures. So again, this is a use in a light industrial zoning district. It does not increase the square footage of the facility in any way. They're going to be occupying an existing building. So the use permit findings are as follow. It's consistent with the general plan. It's compatible with the surrounding area. It's consistent with the capability of our infrastructure. It contributes to the general well-being of the surrounding community, and it complies with the planning regulations. So this would establish a new service use that is compatible with the light industrial zoning district. It would create new employment opportunities, and it would support economic activity within a key industrial area of the city. It would not alter the existing building footprint. It would not alter the existing building footprint, increase square footage. And it will actually reduce the amount of existing surface parking and off-street loading areas currently provided. It will comply with applicable planning regs. And the conditions of approval will ensure that bicycle requirements and performance standards are met through the operation of the project. In addition, we do need to make findings as well for parking spaces above the maximum. Again, these are existing parking spaces onsite. Based on the use, the maximum that is allowed is 32. The number that is being proposed is 39. The number that currently exists on the site is 45. So again, they will be removing six of those existing spaces. So in order to make these findings, you have to acknowledge or address the following. That additional parking is required to meet demand. That it will not result in overdependence on cars or adversely affect transit, bike, or pedestrian access. So as noted, again, these 39 spaces are necessary both for customer and employee parking, as well as the storage of rental vehicles and temporary storage of vehicles onsite. Again, according to the transportation review, the anticipated traffic is comparable to other uses in the I&amp;L zoning district. The number of existing spaces will be reduced. And the project will also include public improvements to the sidewalk and streetscape that improve pedestrian access in both 66th and 67th Street. So staff does recommend that Planning Commission approve this conditional use permit, subject to the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on, Tesla's going to present, yes?
Yes.
Do we want to stop and ask questions, or we have further presentations?
We do have some representatives from Tesla who would like to present briefly. And then we will all be available for questions, as well as folks online.
Good evening, council members and staff. Thank you for taking time today to meet with us and for listening to our presentation. My name is Akansha Vishnoi.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Is it better now? My name is Akansha Vishnoi, and I'm a staff design manager at Tesla. First of all, I would like to start by thanking staff. And we support staff's recommendation and conditions of approval per their recommendation. We understand, as Elisa mentioned, that there are some concerns about air quality related to the facility. So I just wanted to talk about it briefly and address it proactively. According to Tesla's environmental health and safety team, Tesla health and safety are fundamental value at Tesla. And as Elisa mentioned, Tesla plans to obtain all environmental permits and approvals from local, state, and federal government agencies that are required for operation of this collision center. With that, I would like to thank you all.
Thank you. Does that conclude the presentations we have coming up?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, let's move on then to commissioner questions. Who would like to start us off? Questions for either staff or Tesla? Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. I understand that 67th Street will be for, that parking lot will be used for customers and for loading. And that 66th Street will be used primarily for employee parking and vehicle storage, correct? Yeah, okay, I'm getting nods. And my question to staff, is there a way to, what happens if things go awry and those uses are flipped? What recourse do we have as a city or a resident who, you know, that might not be compatible with the places on 66th Street, including Liquid Sugar? And Jay say that, you know, if there are, let's say there was an idling truck coming in every day with deliveries or, you know, other conflicts. How do we make sure that the plans as delivered? Because I don't see anything in the CUP that speaks to this, but that the property is being used as the plans state.
I can take that, and Elisa can add to it. So as part, if this permit is approved, as part of that, the plans are also approved. So they would be in violation of their approved plans, and that would trigger a code enforcement effort. If the commission so desires, we can make that clearer with additional condition of approval as well. But if they are in violation of approved plans, then that triggers code enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was curious on the site plan and the building plans. I didn't see specifically where the paint booth was called out. And I know that's an area of concern for the community. And at least it wasn't labeled specifically. So perhaps either staff or the applicant could provide that information. And I also had a
Can you pull up the floor plan that you showed before, and perhaps you can show where it is?
Hello, my name is Nils Wallstrom, Design Manager with Tesla. On the plan here, the paint booth is located plant south. It is the larger footprint piece of equipment you're seeing down there in the open shop area. Vehicles enter on the right there and are processed through those booths.
Could you use, or perhaps Elisa could use her cursor to kind of point?
Yep, so, sorry. This is the paint booth, actually a prep booth and paint booth base. And vehicles actually move sideways through this area.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Chair, I did have one additional question also. In reference to the car rentals, it said that it was going to be, rentals will be open, available to the public, as well as for customers. There was an estimate of 30 rentals per week. And I was just curious how that is, how the rental service is planning on being marketed to the general public? And what are you basing, what precedent are you basing that 30 rentals a week on? Is it the Pomona facility or other facilities?
Yeah, I'll let another representative here answer.
Commissioner, it's Victor Gartis. I'm a new site opening manager. I manage all the ones here on the West Coast. So in regards to that, we are looking at about 90% to 95% utilization with these. For this project specifically, we'll be focused primarily on the customers at the site. So we won't be doing any public-facing rentals for this one as it stands.
So on the site plan, there was a truck turning radius indicated on the south. Was that only for trash?
That's correct.
Secondly, can, for the edification of both the commission and the public, can the, we know that it has to meet environmental standards. It has to meet various, the paint booth I'm speaking about. What does that mean? So what is the end result of meeting those standards? Meaning, what is the air quality that would be allowed?
I can speak to that briefly. I believe we also have someone from Tesla online who can potentially speak further to air quality. So I would say I'm not that familiar with the exact regulations and what the exact percentage of threshold would be, like, air quality would be reduced by. I will note on the EPA website, in regards to the auto body rule, they note that with best practices implemented, it would reduce air quality emissions by 90%.
Is there a representative from Tesla?
We'd like to get back to you with a specific answer. We do have an air quality team at Tesla and our environmental health and safety teams that I think can provide that information to what the final air quality standard is that meets those regulations.
They're not available tonight?
Not believe we have them online.
Sorry, I had one last question, which was about noise. One is, is there a condition of approval requiring the doors to be closed?
There is not a condition of approval requiring the doors to be closed. So are noise
During operations, in other words. Okay, well, we can add that because that makes a huge difference on noise transmission. Obviously, this building, wall-wise, is really good for sound. I mean, you know, it's concrete tilt-up walls on both sides and almost no openings. And it's also setback from the street to the south. So it should be a very good noise-insulating building. But what is the allowable noise level? What are our noise standards that's required to meet?
Give me I can double-check, but I believe it is 65 dB.
From, at the point of the source, or at the
At the property line.
At the property line, okay. And just to educate others, can you, 65 dB is comparable to what in sound? You know how they have it? We can look it up online if we need to, but
I believe I can actually speak to that. So during the evening, during nighttime hours, the allowed sound level at the property line would be basically a conversational level of two people standing about five feet apart. I mean, during the daytime, it would be something closer to, say, a washing machine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all the information presented so far. I'd like to start with issues about batteries on the site. So my first question is, has the fire department, Alameda County Fire Department, reviewed the plans specifically for any risk related to lithium ion battery storage?
So we have had a consultant review the project, the conditional use permit as is, against fire. The fire department would review this at the building permit phase and before a certificate of occupancy can be submit or be approved. And at that phase, they would get into the specifics of what safety is needed for storage onsite.
Okay, so there's no threshold at this point where the fire department would say, "We're not comfortable moving forward with this because of the risk posed by a certain number of batteries."
That's correct. So the scale of detail at this point is much broader and would get more specific as it gets closer.
Okay, and for the Tesla representatives in the room, can you please speak to how many damaged batteries you expect to have onsite?
It is very rare that we do replace those batteries. Any batteries that are onsite are not kept there for more than 24 hours at a time. They're just properly
Pardon me, for any Tesla representative that comes, you have to speak directly into the microphone because we have a recording going and we need to make sure that we get all of your words. Thank you.
Apologies. So for, we don't replace that many batteries at these collision centers. And any batteries that do end up getting replaced are not stored onsite for longer than 24 hours.
And related to that, if a car comes in damaged, so say it's on the back of a flatbed coming into the site, at what point is a determination made of whether that battery needs to be replaced or not, and whether it's a hazard?
The technician will go through and review the vehicle just to make sure that it is up to spec and what it needs to do. And then there's a litany of things that need to happen if that battery does need to be replaced. And the technician will go through that process at that time.
Okay, thank you. Related to batteries as well, are you aware of an incident earlier this month at a Tesla center where several cars burned at the same time in a parking lot and caused a bit of a runaway in terms of thermal efficiency? And it took several hours to put out the flames?
I am not aware.
Okay, it was in Southern California. So there were four cars that simultaneously caught fire. And it was outside in a parking lot area, I believe is either a service center or a collision site. So I would like, we can get into comments later, but I think there are some remaining questions about number of batteries that will be onsite and any sort of damaged batteries. I have some questions about the transportation analysis. So I noticed that some data from a Pomona collision center was used in that analysis. Is that Pomona service center open, or collision center currently open?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because online it's reflected as closed. I'm not sure why that is.
It's currently being used as a used car center, which is the same kind of function. It's where we're repairing our used vehicles for resale.
Okay, and the data for that study was from 2021. Do you know why it was from several years ago?
I do not.
It might be interesting to know if that's reflective of current conditions or if it might be a little bit outdated. But again, we can discuss that later. On the map in the transportation analysis, it showed collision centers in either Berkeley or Albany and one in San Francisco. Is that correct? Are there collision centers there?
There are no collision centers in Berkeley or San Francisco.
Okay, so I think that the map might be, I don't know. We can check and see if it relates to any other findings in the transportation analysis. But that might be something that needs to be corrected.
So, I did look into the Berkeley Collision Center, or the Berkeley Repair Center. It is a more traditional repair center and would not be considered a collision center, basically. They're not doing spray booth type of work there, to my understanding.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I actually don't, I couldn't figure out why that map was included, if it was just context, or if there was some data that was being pulled from those centers. So it's something that we might want to take another look at and see later on. A question for staff. On 66th and 67th Streets, there's crossings at the Emeryville Greenway there. Do you have any collision data on any pedestrian or bicycle versus car collisions in those vicinity? I apologize, I should have asked you before the meeting so you could pull it up. But do you happen to know?
No, I'm afraid not, but we can get that information.
Okay, thank you. Next question is that we had several constituents write in with a specific question about how the city of Emeryville will ensure that environmental and local community will not be harmed by this. So what I'd like is to pose that question to staff. What would the role of the city be if this project were to go forward in making sure that citizens are protected?
Well, the first would be the building permit review. That's the process that they don't even get to start the business until they have acquired all the relative permits from various agencies. Once the building permit is issued and a TCO or CO certificate of occupancy is issued, then, and they start running the business, if they are in violation of any conditions of approval, then that would trigger a code enforcement. So depending on the kind of violation, it can range from, you know, stopping work to correct, giving them time to correct whatever that violation is. So that would really depend on what that violation is. But that's how it would proceed, and that's how the community would be protected.
And specifically, go ahead.
Just one more legal follow-up to that is, your standard conditions of approval require the, require the applicant to indemnify and defend the city should there are operations or maintenance of the building permits that may, of the improvements related to the building permits that Miro just mentioned, should any liability arise due to their operations or their construction. So that's in your standard conditions of approval for any conditional use permit, just to add on to what Miro was saying.
Okay, great. And in terms of air quality, since we were touching on that earlier, who would be doing the periodic inspections for compliance with the standards set by Bay Area Air Quality Management District? Okay, so
Yeah, it's BACMED. The city does not have that kind of expertise.
And do you know, does BACMED do those proactively, or is it only in response to complaints?
I'm not sure, but my guess would be that they would do it on complaint basis.
Okay. Great, and then in terms of the CEQA determination, I was curious if sensitive receptors in close vicinity to the project were considered when making that, the CEQA determination? So meaning elder determination. So meaning elders, schoolchildren, so in this case, I think it would be elders who are across the street specifically, who could be more vulnerable to air quality issues.
No, we have not done that. This is an industrial zone. There are certain uses that are allowed by right and certain uses that require conditional use permit, and that's why it's here. To do that kind of level of detail, we don't typically do that for something that is going on in an existing building. This is not a new project.
So that's something that might be considered in an air quality modeling study, for example, looking at like plumes of pollutants?
Correct.
And that's not been done yet for this project?
No.
That's ended my questions for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Small, do you have any questions?
My questions are very similar, actually, which is what happens if they violate the air quality standards that are in place, if there is some kind of ongoing monitoring or if they do lose the, those standards, if they have the ability to fix them or if they are then in violation, if there is a code enforcement or what other forms of enforcement would happen. I think, I think you spoke to that, though, at that, at this point.
Yes, it would be to the code enforcement process. If we get complaints of any kind, we would look into that as well to determine which agency to get in touch with to ensure that, you know, that they are compliant with their permit requirements.
Is there any ability to do conditions that would specify a certain number of complaints would cause some kind of enforcement action or some kind of change to the permitting allowance?
Commission is free to come up with any conditions that they do, they deem necessary.
Thank you.
I may also, sorry, if I may also note, apologies for going out of order, but we do have the transportation consultant online if they would like to respond to any of the traffic-related questions.
Any of the commissioners want to hear from the- From Walter? Anyone have a question for them? Nobody? Okay, that comes down to me and lucky me, the commissioner's pretty much asked all but my smallest questions. So I'm just gonna ask a couple of things. I did have questions about the trees and I believe our arborist is online, so in order to not waste their time, I would just like to ask what the basis of the tree recommendations were.
The arborist is coming remotely, so she'll be on momentarily.
Hi.
Go ahead, Molly, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so Alyssa did a great job of narrowing down the trees that were appropriate. We have a, we created a list of about, let's see, about 70 trees that are appropriate for use as street trees in the city of Emeryville. And, and it's all about soil volume and a lot of soil volume requirements for the trees. So, so yeah, we came up with Euclid Spatulata and Water Gum. And both these trees are evergreen. Evergreen is an appropriate tree for California because they make their food in the wintertime when California has water. So, so they're more drought tolerant. The Euclid Spatulata is a, about a 35 to 40-foot tree with a 20-foot spread. A very, I actually witnessed this tree down at the Facebook Old Sun Microsoft campus, planted in bay mud and with very poor soil volume, very poor oxygen availability in the soil. And they were doing very well. So I think it's appropriate for this location. And Water Gum is one of my favorite trees, just a beautiful bark, beautiful little yellow flowers, and, and also very tough, very appropriate for, for street settings.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any more questions for the arborist over there? Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, not for the arborist.
Okay, well, thank you for hanging on to the call. I think that might be all of our arborist questions. I, I have one question for staff. I saw on the staff report that there was an intent by Tesla to possibly expand their hours or apply to expand their hours to 11, is that correct?
That's correct.
But the noise ordinance only allows them to do operations until nine?
Yeah, so basically, that would, that is not included in the scope of this conditional use permit. So, A, if that's something they would request, they would have to get an amendment to the conditional use permit, and they would have to request an ongoing waiver from city council to expand their, their services.
Okay, thank you. One last question. I have been down to the site a couple of times in the last few days and really, really taken in the context. And I appreciate the lot of work has been done to the site already. I do have one question about the fence, which I know was very recently put in, and I want to know if like that fence, undecorated, no plants or anything like that, is a long-term plan there for that site. It's a chain-link fence with like black slats through it.
Thank you for the question. As you know, that fence is part of a, you know, site work that's falling under property improvements with the current building. We were intending to inherit that as-is. If, if there are other concerns, we would be happy to address them as well.
Okay, thank you. That is all of my questions. Let's then open up public comment. Wait a second. Go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. One more question for Tesla. Can you speak to whether Tesla has had any violations from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District perspective for air quality in the past?
Yeah, thank you for the question. We did see there was a, a settlement referenced in one of the comments. And again, according to our environmental health and safety team, their statement is that with regard to the reference settlement, as the press release states, Tesla cooperated fully and has taken steps to address the issues brought to our attention.
So that's, that's regarding the settlement that was filed by several district attorneys? Is that also pertaining to the 112 notices of violation since 2019 that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has allegedly found?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the commission? All right, we'll be opening it up to public comment. Before we get to speakers in the room, I believe we have some cards that need to be read in. I just want to clarify one point before this. Because of recent developments at our public meetings here, we stopped reading these public comment cards and instead we're distributing them. However, the notice for this meeting said that they would be read, so we're going to go ahead and do that. Take it away, Director Small.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarifying note. I will, and our policy was, or is stated on the agenda, is to time these and limit them to three minutes, which will also be the case for commenters that are here in person. This comment is-
Excuse me, in point of order, do we need to note the time and open the public hearing?
Did you-
For the gavel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wax, are you opening the public hearing?
I am.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you. I am opening the public hearing at 7:29. Take it away, Director Smalley.
All right, thank you. Comment from Bethany Lurie. "I strongly oppose the permit for the Tesla collision for several reasons. First, as a resident and homeowner who lives on 66th Street, I am concerned about the noise from the collision center, the increased traffic on a relatively quiet street, and the impact on parking availability for residents. Noise from the auto body repair shops is notorious. There are very few Tesla auto collision repair centers in the Bay. The closest ones right now are in San Jose and Sunnyvale. This means opening one in the city of Emeryville will draw an enormous amount of traffic from Tesla owners around the East Bay and San Francisco. We need only look to the numerous auto body centers around the Bay to see how surrounding blocks are affected regarding parking. The city would need to institute a residential parking zone to keep spaces available for the large number of residents. Second, apart from the nuisance of such a business on a quiet street, there is the reputation of Tesla to consider. The project has been stated as exempt from environmental review, quote, 'because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the proposal may have a significant effect on the environment,' end quote. However, Tesla has violated environmental and OSHA regulations over and over again. Tesla has been sued by 25 California counties recently, including Alameda County, because of its mishandling of environmental waste. The Fremont Tesla plant was recently sued by an environmental nonprofit for allowing its plant to emit harmful toxins into the air, affecting air quality and therefore the health of employees and nearby residents. Tesla cannot be trusted to comply with environmental and worker safety regulations. Emeryville should seek to support businesses that partner with the communities in which they set up shop. Commerce must be accountable to people and the government. Emeryville must continue to be a place that people love to live, work, and do business in." That's the end of that comment.
Do we have any further comments that need to be read in?
No, no chair.
All right, with that, we'll be looking for comments from members of the public. They will be limited to three minutes. If you wish to speak, please either raise your hand or approach the lectern.
Good evening. My name is Shiris. I'd like to thank the zoning board for the opportunity to comment tonight. My partner and I brought her home directly across the street from the proposed collision center about a year and a half ago after living in the area for about 25 years. We're first-time homeowners and we're very happy to have found a safe, relatively quiet place to raise our daughter, just right over there, observing the civic process. We love our location around Emeryville and we're alarmed and dismayed to find that the construction outside our window, like directly outside our window, has been in preparation for a Tesla collision center. I think this is a terrible idea and I'm strongly opposed to the plan, not just for my family's peace and well-being, but for the neighborhood and the city itself. My objections fall into two general categories. The first were concern in allowing any large collision center to operate at the site, while the second had to do with Tesla operating there in particular. First area is a mixed-use residential area where parking is very scarce. A rows of condominiums in the Emeryville Greenway see large numbers of people walking, biking, running, going from their homes and work grocery stores. Putting the only dedicated Tesla collision center in the East Bay at this site would drastically increase traffic. Regardless of what their analysis would be, it's the only one within 35 miles and way more people now have Teslas. We've seen the small-scale collision centers along San Pablo have big impacts on parking and traffic. Imagine what a large regional center would do. This zoning board prepared to create residential parking accommodation to ensure that residents don't lose their parking to this center. And concerning the noise, this pleasant area will suddenly be the site of a busy center that specializes in hammering, sanding, grinding, painting, and welding. It will impact the character and livability of the area. My second general concern is having Tesla in particular as a neighbor and part of our city. They can send representatives to make assurances and general platitudes, which I'm sure they've done in every city for every single operation they've started. But Tesla has shown a pattern in practice of extreme disregard for local, state, and federal ordinances, regulations, and laws. They are not a good neighbor. Just look at the issues they've had in Fremont. They've been sued endlessly for hazardous waste violations for refusing to follow health and safety guidelines that caused a massive spike in illness to start of the pandemic. They refused to close down when asked to do so. They've, so many lawsuits that I can't even list them here. That said, the one lawsuit that I think has particular relevance for tonight's proposal is one that's already been discussed, where a few months ago, they had to settle with 25 California County District Attorney's Offices involving illegal mishandling of hazardous waste. The lawsuit claimed that violations occurred at as many as 101 Tesla facilities across the state, including here in Alameda County. Waste such as paint materials, brake fluids, used batteries, antifreeze, toxic welding waste were illegally sent to improper landfills. 25 California counties had to band together and sue before Tesla agreed to settle. It would be reckless for the city of Emeryville to put itself in a regulatory position with a company like Tesla that routinely breaks laws and defies local authority and requires long-running and expensive lawsuits to bring it into compliance. Emeryville is a relatively small city with relatively shallow pockets to spend on lawsuits, and Tesla will take advantage of that fact when they want to run roughshod over our community's safety and well-being. For all these reasons, I strongly encourage the board to protect our quiet neighborhood and our lovely city, and please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public wish to speak?
Good evening, Council-
Whoa.
Good evening, Council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to present my comments on this project. My name is George Martin. I'm the president/CEO of the George M. Martin Company on 67th Street, basically right across the street from this project. We've been at this location for 84 years. I kind of know the neighborhood. I know everything about, you know, traffic, people, neighbors, and such. So I, I am very familiar with what goes on in the neighborhood. I'm very, very concerned about traffic. Right now, traffic is very acceptable. Parking is very strained. And part of that is, we have some homeless people on the street, parking there, and motorhomes and such that take up a lot of parking. But also, with the medical center up the street at Foundry, Foundry 31 or whatever the Foundry number is, they have pushed parking tremendously on this street. And, and we, we're able to park with our employees. We have a lot. We also lease space from the Foundry people. But when we add the Tesla push on that, they say they have 39 spaces, but yet they're, or they're gonna have 35 space, nine spaces. They have 50 employees. I don't know where the other employees are gonna park, perhaps on the street, which again is gonna push parking even further. Regarding batteries, I can speak very directly on that. If any of you have ever seen the car battery fire from an electric vehicle, I think you find it extraordinarily frightening. We had one next, right outside of our building a number of months back. And the fire department really strained to get it out. They had to go through extreme measures to put it out. Granted, maybe inside the building, they won't have that. Maybe they'll have fire suppression systems. But it is very frightening to see a electric car battery fire. I hope that Emeryville doesn't look at bringing in a Tesla simply as a matter of prestige, having a company such as Tesla now in Emeryville. I hope that's not a driving factor because I don't think this is necessarily the right place for it. Also, this building has been vacant for quite a while. It used to be the New Logic Building. I embrace a new company coming in there and contributing to the neighborhood. It was, New Logic was an electronic firm. The people before them, Copper and Brass, were a distribution firm. What they provided in, or what the impact on the neighborhood was very minimal regarding traffic and such because they were distribution primarily. This is really tremendous. They talk, it's just gonna be constant automobiles, even though they say it's gonna be very minimal. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll end that with that. One quick question. I did not present a letter for or against to the commission. I wanted to hear the presentation first. Is it too late to present a letter to the commission? Is a question.
In addition to your public comment?
Yes.
Sure, if you'd like to hand something to the-
Well, I don't have it now. I was waiting to hear the presentation because I know what was written here, but I wanted to hear what the, what the public said. If it's too late, so be it it is.
The commission may or may not act tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so if they don't, yeah, you'll have-
Once again, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And as a reminder, our email addresses are all on the city site if you wish to contact us directly. Do we have any other questions from members of the public? Go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Hong Ho, and I represent Hackman Capital Partners as a landlord for 1295 67th Street. And obviously, I support this CUP approval. I think it's, you know, kind of obvious economically. I think this is a great benefit to the city. I think, as George has mentioned previously, this building has been vacant for a while. This building was purchased in 2019, and during this five-year period that we've had ownership, I've only had six months of occupancy here. Despite trying to market it to different types of industries, different type of uses, this is what we have today. And I think this is an opportunity for the city to try to take an asset and help increase its economic base, especially in a time when businesses are contracting and debt is pretty expensive. expensive. We talked about the benefits about public infrastructure previously on the screen, so I don't need to go into that, but these will be tangible benefits for the city, your residents to actually touch and feel, including 1,600 square feet of landscaping that we're going to upgrade. But I think the other point that hasn't been brought to tonight about the environmental is the benefit that Tesla brings to the environment. The city council members have previously talked about pivoting away from fossil fuels, and this is a great opportunity to do that. I think by expanding the infrastructure for EVs, it'll help improve adoption and help reduce carbon emissions, which will be better for the environment. I think lastly, I will say that as someone who's been in industrial real estate for 17 years, the last thing I want to do is to invite a tenant here to pollute our community and the building. So it's in my best interest to make sure that they comply with all laws, and I expect to do that under the lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? All right. With the time being 7:41, I am now closing public comment and bringing it back to deliberation. Do any of the commissioners wish to start with comments? Go ahead, Martinez.
I have just a very general question for staff. So, you know, there's, and I share a lot of it, but there's a lot of public sentiment and concern regarding this specific company, but I would like our staff to reflect back to us on what our role is as planning commission tonight and what we can and cannot weigh in our deliberations for approving the CUP and moving forward with the project. What are the rights of the property owners and the people who are applying for this permit and how, where the box is for us to operate in? Because, you know, certainly there's feelings about this company, and there are concerns, and many people have brought forward examples of misconduct viewed on behalf of this company. So I hope that question was clear, Kristi and Miru.
So I think we'll tag team here. I'll start, and then you can... In order, if the commission is not inclined towards approval, you would need to continue this item so that we can come back with findings. You can also continue this item and ask for additional information that has not yet been provided. There were, I've got a few things on my note regarding how many batteries on site, what is their record regarding violations. So there are a number of issues that were brought up where there were no answers provided. So that is one option that the commission has. To gather more information, we come back, and then you may consider whether you are able to make the findings or not. Kristi, would you like to add, please?
Sure. Thank you, Miru, and thank you, Commissioner Martinez. I think it's a good opportunity to just remind the commission that in order to take a step back, just from what Miru was talking about, specific options for you, in order to approve a conditional use permit, you need to make several findings. Those are found on, at the bottom of your, page one of your draft resolution. If you could not make findings this evening to support approval of the use permit, or to, then, you know, you can decide to do, one of the options Miru has presented, either ask staff for more information and to continue the item and come back with that information, or you could indicate which findings you're having trouble making, and we can work through that together. But just from a 10,000-foot view, in order to approve the project, you would need to be able to make the findings as they're laid out in front of you. There are one, two, three, four, five, and then an extra couple for exceeding the maximum parking, six, seven. So those seven findings, you would need to be able to make those in order to approve the project, and if you can't, you know, then we would need to hear from you which findings you can't make and why, and/or whether you'd like to have more information and continue this and have this item come back to you.
Is that everything you have, Commissioner Martinez?
I mean, I can go a little further to say that I would be in favor of collecting some of the information that we've asked for tonight, specifically around battery storage. Fire suppression is the lens that I would like to look at that through. I would also be in favor of adding to the CUP specific language about the use of the parking lots, because I can see that affecting the neighborhood in a negative way if that was not enforced. Because I'm on that street five days out of the week, and 66th Street is very different from 67th Street. It's extremely industrial on 67th Street and very neighborhood-y on 66th Street, and I think if vehicles making deliveries and loading started to happen on 66th Street, that would be a problem. But I, that would be the direction that I'd like to move in tonight.
Mr. Chair, there are also some other inconsistencies, I think, in the application that perhaps the applicant could address when they come back with additional information, such as the statement about the rental parking being open to the public, but then we heard testimony this evening that that won't in fact be the case. There is the question about the hours and wanting to extend them, you know, beyond 9:00 PM, and then also about the impact of potentially off-site employee parking and how that's going to be handled and what traffic impacts those shuttles will have.
So I would say, general, I mean, I agree that further information would be very helpful, and so continuing the item for that reason is a good idea. Generally, I'm in favor of the particular kind of use. A light industrial area, I think, as zoned, is important for a city. One thing that, to our homeowners, is that is the zoning that you moved into. And so when you move into that, if, at least if you know that across the street, that can always be a light industrial use. I think, whether it's Tesla or another company, I don't think there'll be any noise issue here, although I think a condition of approval should address the noise issue. So, for example, that there will be a property line within certain hours, that the DBA allowed is specified, and that we should make that very specific. So, and that including the company when operating shall keep the doors closed. So I think that's something that we should be careful about. I think we should also include a condition of approval that the loading will only occur on the north side of the building, and that only trash removal is allowed on the south side, so that the loading trucks, like we say, that those sounds, et cetera, won't be occurring on the south. I think the air quality testing and the air quality issue is very important for everybody, and including the commission. And I think that I would like to try and include, and I'd ask Tesla to think about, something that can be more reassuring to us than you will just meet the standards. For example, would Tesla be willing to sponsor testing to see that you meet the standards at a certain point shortly after opening? For example, six months and a year or something like that? That you will sponsor the testing and show us the results of that testing, that you're meeting the BACMA standards or hopefully exceeding them? Definitely, I would like to know from Tesla what, I assume there's a scrubber or some kind of air quality device to the paint booth. And so, once that air is released, what quality air, what kind of particulates or toxins can be released with it? I'd like to know what that actual BACMA standard means. Secondly, I would very much suggest, or not more than suggest, I'd like to have also a C of A, that the exhaust vent be located on the north side of the building from the spray booth. As you know, you can just, you can duct the location of that exhaust venting. So it would go on the far, let's say, you know, north side of the building, or one-fourth the depth of the building to the north, something like that. And then definitely the fire suppression, because I would assume that a typical water sprinkler system is not good for battery fires. And so what kind of fire suppression system would be provided? That might also be a C of A in order to, in order to make sure that that impact is minimal. So I think, in other words, we should do our best to make sure that these are very specific requirements that are met and that we make sure that we're doing as much as we can to ensure a healthy, minimal-impact facility. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone, for sharing your thoughts so far. I am going to say that I'm not prepared to make the findings necessary to approve this application right now. I don't find that it is consistent with the general plan, specifically the piece that requires us to find that the location, size, coverage, density, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed use will be compatible with and not adversely affect the surrounding area, including neighborhood character, street design and capacity, safety, noise, and lighting. I did a bit of looking around online to understand where other Tesla collision centers are located. I could not find any that were so close to residential areas as what they're proposing here. I think this is a real outlier. It is extremely close to residential housing. It is also very close to a place where elderly people spend a large amount of time. And in my mind, that provides a really big set of concerns around safety, coupled with a track record of violations of multiple kinds from the applicants. I know we've discussed how much we can take that into account. Put in another way, we've heard about the economic benefit to the city. Yes, in the short term, I'm sure there would be. What is the economic cost of remediation that will be necessary if hazardous waste is not contained properly within the building's footprint? What if it leaches into the ground? When will we know about that? What will the cost to the city be? This is an area that is marked as a potential park site in the future. Let's hope that someday the city of Emeryville can purchase this and turn it into a park. What would the cost be to turn it into a publicly usable space again? I don't think that we know the answer to that, but to me, that is a huge risk from the use that is being proposed here. I have real concerns about the battery and the lack of information provided tonight about how many batteries would be on site and the suppression plan. To me, that is an absolutely crucial part of this application, and I'm surprised that the applicants were not more prepared to answer that tonight. The vehicles, as I understand, that are coming into this proposed collision center would have been in collisions. That makes them much more vulnerable to fire than other regular batteries that are driving around in cars, being driven around in cars on a day-to-day basis. That coupled with the even temporary storage needed for repairs means that there is a very high risk of a problem happening there. Without understanding the capabilities of the great Alameda County Fire Department to address fires and suppress fires such as these, I don't think there's any way that we can make a finding that there is a safe situation proposed here. We don't know what training the fire department has received on suppression of lithium-ion battery thermal runaway. We don't know if they have the water capacity to address a large conflagration in the proximity of residents quickly. There are also toxic fumes that come from such fires. That's not something that you can treat with a suppression or a treatment system within the facility. That's something that is going to escape into the community if it were to happen. And there would have to be a shelter in place or something like that issued for the surrounding community. Let's hope this never happens, but I think it is something that is our responsibility to think about, because it does present a pretty unique set of circumstances. In terms of the paint booth, it is something that, again, I will say Tesla does not have a good record on. In the past few years, there have been multiple violations found at their facilities in this area, in this county, and in surrounding counties, even though they are subject to the same type of regulations that we're talking about tonight. That air pollution has real consequences for people who live and work near those facilities. Sometimes those consequences cannot be reversed, especially for children and elderly. So I don't have the confidence that even with the regulations in place, we are going to be creating a safe condition for people who live in the neighborhood. Oftentimes, by the time an inspector comes out to look for a violation, the problem may have disappeared. Some days, the equipment may be working, and sometimes the equipment may not be working. It's very difficult, notoriously difficult, to pinpoint the source of air pollution when it is happening, but it can be happening for a large amount of the time and just not be detected. So this is, it's a tricky situation. This is an urban area. These issues come up, but I do feel like we have a duty as a planning commission to protect the safety of the residents in this city. Thank you.
You know, there's sort of two parts of this for me. One is that, one of the things I love about Emeryville, and I think its neighborhood character, is very much that it is a formerly industrial area, and that we do have a mix of uses, and particularly residential next to industrial. Anytime, you know, really, it was industrial and the residential arrived later, right? And so we have this then challenge of how these two things work next to each other. And we have to kind of accommodate that at a certain level. We have to learn to figure out and adapt what we're willing to modify and understand within our own kind of sensibilities of how these things can be neighbors. So I kind of look in that bigger context and say that this is an existing industrial use. This is an existing location where this has happened before. There are a complex web of kind of transportation issues that may be around it. It's not heavily used right now. I'm not particularly concerned about the amount of traffic as it's been demonstrated in the transportation study. I think that there's a way in which these things can be next to each other. I've actually lived next to an auto paint shop before and had the experience of sometimes wondering if the air quality was okay, and sometimes it didn't really seem like it might be. So I would like to see how these things can be next to each other and really be part of the kind of quality of mixed uses. That said, I don't think Tesla, you did yourself any favors tonight. The number of violations that have happened in other places really, really concerns me. When I hear that there are no other facilities in 35 miles, I think also two sides to that coin. One side is that the number of Teslas that I certainly see around the neighborhoods need to be repaired. There are tons of Teslas everywhere. The idea that they have to go a really long way to get repaired is concerning. EV is part of our future, part of our low-carbon future. We need for EV to work, along with many other things, like transit and bicycle-friendly neighborhoods, which we have here in Emeryville. So on the one side, I feel like it's our responsibility as a small city in a place that has a lot of electric vehicles to make sure that they can be repaired properly. I also trust our air quality management. I trust our building codes and our fire codes. They're adapting to batteries right now. The state is looking at that at a certain level, so I want to trust those systems. But I think, again, Tesla, you're not doing yourself any favors in knowing that there are the number of violations that have happened in other places. I really would have wanted to see greater confidence that you know that those are happening and that you are prepared to address them in this particular facility. So in that sense, there are two pieces that I would like to see. One is, I think, continuing it makes sense to find out more information and maybe to give you all an opportunity to be more strident and clear and specific about what you would do to make sure that that will never happen here. There are children. That bikeway is incredibly packed with seniors and children every single day. Also, you know, I think we need to think about what those conditions can possibly be, so that there are, if there are violations, you have very few chances to fix them, that you are at risk if you violate that kind of air quality. So it's not necessarily just if someone calls it in and you get in trouble and maybe you get sued and, you know... you get sued and, you know, it takes a really, really long time, but rather, it has to do with being a really good neighbor and that that happens much more quickly.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Small and my other fellow commissioners. It is no surprise to me that environmental safety and concerns about the batteries are among the top issues here. And the reason being, you can just walk down to the neighborhood. If you go and you walk down to that site and you turn in almost any direction, what you're going to see are beautiful homes. You're going to see our beautiful greenway, which is the backbone of our park system. Beautiful homes in almost every direction. And even if you look just between this facility and the greenway, on 66th is one of the most beautiful parking lots in our entire city. Like, we have beautiful brick buildings in the area, whatever it is that it looks like to the northwest. First of all, this is very clearly a neighborhood that is on the rise. If you looked at the, if you looked at the photos that were showing the site, the gym just to the west has been covered in a gorgeous mural. There's a bunch of murals on 67th. Combination of city development and civic pride by community organizations and so forth have left this a beautiful, green, lush area. And the last thing we want to do is for the closest light industrial site to all of this housing be a hazard to all of those things and detract from the quality of service on the greenway, detract from the quality of life and possibly shorten lives in all of these residentials, look like a big black box where everybody has overgrown plants and beautiful paint jobs and everything like that. In order for this to be a good fit, it has to be harmonious in every way. And my fellow commissioners have spent a lot of time talking about the environmental and fire safety. Because this is one of my special interests, I want to zoom in on what is just to your east here and come back to the greenway. I was just down there at 3:30-ish and took a picture of the counter that is just north of 67th. By 3:30, there were over 800 people who had walked across there and over 400 who had cycled across. This is a major point of conflict, and the thing to understand about the greenway is this is an overwhelmingly traffic-shielded way across town. This connects people to a lot of our major parks. It is how people can get from the southwest corner of the city all the way to Berkeley. And most of that is parking-protected, so these people who are walking feel very safe until they get to these crossings, because the crossings, the intersections are some of the only places where they are exposed to traffic. We are talking about adding hundreds of car trips a day to a facility that is right next to this. That has to work very well. It has to be extremely safe. The air quality, noise quality, fire safety, all of these things have to work very well in order for this to harmonize. What I am hearing is a consensus from the planning commission tonight is that we would like to continue this item. And based on the level of concern, I personally think that that is very valid. In fact, like, the level of concern from the community with the short notice that they've had, they deserve to have these questions answered more thoroughly. The commission has a lot of questions that they want answered more thoroughly, and this is, this is a very important juncture here. The direction that this neighborhood goes is going to be very determined by this facility if we approve it. And it's very important that we keep things in the right direction, because the city has been working for decades on redevelopment up through this corridor, and you are seeing all of the results. You just have to look around. So we don't want to mess that up. We don't want to shorten any of our residents' lives. We don't want anybody hit by Cybertruck. We don't want to degrade the quality of, quality of one of our most important pieces of infrastructure, which is the greenway. And you've heard all of the concerns that we've had tonight. So that being the end of my comments, does anyone have any further comments they want to make before anyone wants to perhaps make a motion?
I just reiterate that I think one of the missing pieces of information for me, picking up on what you just said about the greenway, is the safety performance on 66th and 67th, if there have been any incidences of pedestrian or bicycle versus vehicle. And I know they're not always reported, but just to get a sense if there has been anything. Thank you.
Any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to continue this item to next meeting.
Request that you would make a motion to a date uncertain.
To a date uncertain?
Yes.
Okay. To move to continue this item to a date uncertain and that we receive follow-up information.
Second.
The motion by Vice Chair Henme to continue this item to a date uncertain, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Chaff.
But before you go, I just want to clarify, that motion includes staff bringing back the requested information. Okay.
Commissioner Chaff.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Small. Vice Chair Henme.
Aye.
And Chair Wax.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your presentation. I am going to close this item.
Is staff clear on the items that we're asking for?
Yes, we've taken copious notes and bring back some information. Thank you.
All right, again, thank you so much. We are now moving on. We have a study session for our local hazard mitigation plan.
I'd like to invite Assistant City Manager Pedro Martinez to give this presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Pedro Henme is Assistant City Manager. Before I start, I want to recognize Lori Elafont, who's our management analyst and retired new attendant, who really took the lead on this project, but cannot be here tonight. So we're grateful for her expertise and help on this project, so wanted to recognize that. Tonight, my goal is to give an overview of the requirements for updating our plan, which is reviewed every five years. I will cover the planning committee efforts, recommended changes, and next steps. We'll also seek input on hazard mitigation actions and the plan itself. You can find the link to the full 128-page plan in your report. So get started. So another definition of mitigation is lessening or minimizing adverse impacts of a hazardous event. A local hazard mitigation plan is a framework on long-term strategies to mitigate disaster losses. And mitigation's most effective when it is based on comprehensive long-term plans that is developed before a disaster occurs. Why do we do a local hazard mitigation plan? All jurisdictions and special districts in the county are, in the country are required to, under the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, to have an approved local hazard mitigation plan and receive federal funding pre and post disasters. Also, per the DMA 2000, a plan must be updated and approved every five years, and that is what brings us here today. Our last plan was adopted in 2019. FEMA has updated the local hazard mitigation plan policy with new requirements that went to effect April 2023. In that update, there are three new requirements for the local hazard mitigation plan, and they are, one, you need to address climate change prior to this update. You only need to address, prior to this, you only needed to address three natural hazards, fire, flood, and earthquake. Although we have addressed many other hazards in our plan, both natural and human-made, we only needed to address those three to be approved. Now, however, there is a fourth hazard, climate change, that you need to include to meet the minimum requirement. Second new requirement is that you must explicitly engage at-risk, underserved, and socially underserved populations when allowing opportunities for stakeholders and the public to be involved. Studies have shown socially vulnerable communities are especially hit hardest during disasters and need most support to recover. This slide breaks down, breaks down the planning process into four steps, nine tasks. We'll be reviewing each step and the tasks as we go through this presentation. There are seven elements that are required by FEMA and the local hazard mitigation plan, but only A through F applies to Emeryville. Elements G apply only to the jurisdictions and the special districts that have, and maintain a high-hazard dam, seven, so it's not applicable to Emeryville. This takes us into element A, the planning process. For FEMA, the planning process is just as important as the plan itself. Why? Because there's, because to reap the greatest benefit from a hazard mitigation, everyone must have a seat at the table. A planning process that only includes a portion of the community at large can only be partially successful. So our first two steps in the update process were to put our planning team together and to determine who our outside stakeholders were going to be, and we would need to reach out to them individually and collectively to solicit their input of the plan. To FEMA, one of the most important requirements is to give the community an opportunity to be a part of the planning process and provide them with an opportunity to provide comments and input. So how do you involve the community? There are various ways to involve the community. Presentations to elected officials and other public meetings, questionnaires or surveys, posting on social media. You also need to reach out to your outside stakeholders to obtain their comments and inputs. The first step we took last December was we began this update process, was to publish a community survey, which we received 97 responses, with three members of the community expressing an interest to be on the planning team. We put our planning team together, which consists of representatives from each department, and we were, and a representative from Alameda County Fire, and two members of the, of the community. We're good to go. So the very first task of the team was to identify hazards we wanted to include in the plan, and that led us to the, led us to element B. Hazard identification and risk assessment. The planning team's rationale in including a hazard, whether it was natural or human-made, was if that hazard was to occur, could it require us to declare a state of emergency and/or to request federal mitigation funding as a result of the disaster? And we felt the hazard should be included in our plan. There are five steps to conducting a risk assessment. You need to identify and describe your hazards. Identify the community's assets that are at risk for this hazard, analyze the impacts of the hazard, and summarize the city's vulnerability to the hazard. What, how do we get the hazard identification? Identifying the hazards we wanted to include in our plan. We look at the hazards that were included in our previous plans, the hazards identified in Berkeley and Oakland's local hazard mitigation plans, as well as the hazards of concerns from our community survey. From there, the team identified hazards to be included in our plan update and their priority rankings. They are on the slide. So this was the order that the team identified them in. Then we looked at the hazards and the risks to the city. What areas of the impacts could this hazard have on the city, its residents? We then analyzed those more in-depth and established the following areas of concern. On this slide, you'll see the areas of concerns that we identify. We address these, we address these risks in-depth in our plan. What impacts have any of these areas of concerns already have on the city? What impacts have any of these areas of concerns had on other jurisdictions? What could our losses look like if this event should happen here? And what would we need to be done to mitigate the consequences of such an event? So here are the changes in the identified hazards. This table shows from our previous plan. The hazards remain the same, but as you can see, their priority ranking has changed. We identified new areas of concern and there were, that were not in the prior plan. Once we identified our hazard of areas of concerns, we then moved to the next element of our plan, element C, mitigation strategy. Mitigation strategy is really a long-term blueprint, reducing potential losses identified in the risk assessment. The mitigation strategy is, in essence, describes how the city will accomplish the overall purpose of the planning process. Are there actions we can take that can minimize or mitigate the scale of or severity of adverse impacts of the hazards that we identified and consequences of those hazards? Mitigation strategy. The planning team reviewed the mitigation ideas that were in our previous plan. We looked at those actions and identified that we had accomplished over the past five years as well as those that we did not. We then looked in, at those remaining actions and discussed if there were still available actions or worth keeping in the plan, and if not, why. We determined which ones we wanted to keep. We then brainstormed new mitigation actions to improve in the plan update. There, we then evaluated each mitigation action for its feasibility, social benefits, economic benefits, environmental improvements, and community objectives. The team identified 40 mitigation ideas, projects to address our hazards of concerns. One of the, one can scan the QR code here to see the complete list of the mitigation actions and leave any comments or suggestions. Here we have the list for you to see. The 40 mitigation actions, there were 28 carried over previously with an additional 12 new mitigation actions. An example of high-priority action item is the building of a police substation on the east side of the freeway. They can also run the gamut of from promoting mass notification systems or increase earthquake awareness to the community to actual other shovel-on-the-ground projects, such as building a bough wall on Powell Street to prevent flooding. Now that we have put our plan together, we move on to the next element, element D, maintenance. The local hazard mitigation plan is a living document, so as a condition, as conditions change, new details become available or actions progress over time, the plan will need to change to stay up to date. So how is this done? Per our plan, staff will issue an annual community survey, as well as we'll meet on an annual basis to review documents and document any changes. This will make the process easier for the next element, element E, plan update. As mentioned before, the local hazard mitigation plan needs to be formally updated every five years and must include any changes in hazards listed and/or their priority. It also should include documentation of any hazards that occur in our own jurisdiction the previous five years, and what were the results or impacts of those events? If some events did not occur in the city itself, did it occur elsewhere in other jurisdictions? And what were the consequences or impacts of that event? What changes have occurred in the city? Has there been any new development? Any changes in land use? Has any movement been made on any of the mitigation ideas? And if not, why? We then take all the information we gathered through our maintenance of the plan over the previous four to five years, and we put the new plan update together. Once we complete the draft, update the plan, we move on to the next element, F, plan adoption. So next steps. Today, we're looking for input from the commission on the hazards we identified, the proposed mitigation actions, as well as the plan itself. Once we've completed all the presentations, we will make any recommendation, changes, or additions to the plan, and then send it off to Cal OES for their review. Cal OES will review the plan. If they approve, we'll send it to FEMA for their review. FEMA will then need to approve the plan pending adoption by resolution by city council. Once FEMA gives their approval, we will present the local hazard mitigation plan first to the planning commission for their approval and recommendation to council to adopt the plan. The local hazard mitigation plan is an amendment to the safety. The local hazard mitigation plan is an amendment to the safety element in the general plan. Thank you for allowing me this time, and I can take any questions or comments.
Thank you so much. It sounds like you gave this presentation on somewhat short notice. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Never-welcome news. Do we have any questions from my fellow Commissioners? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Assistant City Manager, for your presentation. You had mentioned that one of the requirements as of 2023 is specifically calling out underserved, socially underserved, and at-risk populations. And I think on page 10 of the plan itself, it makes kind of an introduction that that will be part of the plan. But reading through the rest of the plan, I really didn't see how those populations were identified specifically in terms of impact, or how they were, they factored into the rankings of their priorities for the different mitigation member, measures. And that, that work may well have been done. It just didn't come out in the plan, and so I thought perhaps you might be able to speak to that.
Yes, that's a great question. So one of the goals with that one is to have, do reach out. So we did reach out to the school district. We reached out to our Operation Dignity contract that we have with the homeless out there. So we asked for information to come back. We did not receive a lot of information back, so we only had currently what we have in the information, but we definitely will do more work to do additional outreach. Also, it was shared by the Public Safety Committee to also do more outreach to the rental population and see if we could also get some additional feedback from that population.
Pedro, you talked about changing the update schedule so that it would be, changes would be addressed more on a yearly basis by committee, and would that also go to City Council as well on a yearly basis, rather than the five-year schedule that we've seen in the past?
That wasn't a thought, but that's something we can do because the goal is to document everything every year with the Planning Committee and really, you know, if there is a disaster somewhere, really learn from it what was learned from that event that happened in other communities and just track it along the way. But it's something that we can bring and kind of mention and maybe.
I'm not trying to create more work for you. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I think it's more the Planning Committee work to really document it, so you're not trying to do all five years and think about everything.
At once, yeah. No, I've been witness to Lori pulling this all together like magic out of a hat a couple times now. So thank you for all the work on this. It's a huge endeavor, and yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with this document, and I watched the presentation that she gave to council as well. So thank you for the, all the deep work that happens behind the scenes to put this document together.
It takes every department and a lot of staff, so thank you.
Any further questions? Vice Chair?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. Couple of questions. One is, what is the jet fuel line?
What can I say about that? What I know. My understanding, there's, there is a jet fuel line that runs through the city. I don't have the details or specifics of it that I can speak to, but I can get that information to you.
First time I heard about this, staff, can you?
I'm somewhat familiar with it because it spans, it goes far. I believe it's in the railroad right-of-way. There's a Kinder Morgan pipeline, I believe, that runs through there. And it is a, if I remember correctly, it's a multi-product pipeline, meaning it can carry jet fuel and other petroleum products.
Second thing is, because it was number one on the high-priority items, what is, what is the building a bioswale? And why is that such a high priority?
On Powell Street, there's continuous flooding that happens, and so building that would address that issue where it's properly draining off the street and not building up a floods that yearly happens during the rainy season.
Are we talking west of the highway?
Yes, almost like near the fire department.
Pumping out water.
Yes, we have, you'll see a pump out there because of that purpose. That would eliminate the need for that.
Okay, all right. Have there been, from the last five-year report, have there been any of these disasters that have actually happened?
The storms that we had, the bad storms, was it last year and the year before? That we had the trees that all went down in the marina, so that's one of them, where we actually had to go and there was a catastrophic disaster, and we had FEMA reporting to do, and we're asking for money from FEMA for that, that we had to go through.
I see. Okay, thank you.
So I'm just getting to know this process and this project a little bit, but I was wondering if you could speak a little to how you begin to kind of evaluate some of the cost-benefits of different kinds of projects, right? Because some of this relates to property, private property, public property and assets, disruption, economic disruption, social disruption, and just kind of wondering how you begin to kind of weigh in the priority list? Or if there's documentation or sort of analysis that I should be looking into in more depth as well?
I'm trying to think of how, you know, with the planning team, as they're going through, it's kind of based off of events that have happened and natural disasters, or how other cities kind of rank them and put them in. That helps us kind of determine how they end up being ranked. Highly likely to happen versus can happen or have happened, so you want to make sure you address it because if you ever do have a disaster where you need it in place, to ask FEMA for money, basically, at the end of the day.
Right. Yeah, to some degree. And also, I mean, one of the challenges with this kind of analysis, especially looking into the future economic analysis and what you would, how you would probably negotiate at some level with FEMA, is that they often don't, especially the national level, don't really understand the local conditions, economic conditions. And so they think, you know, how do, how do you begin to cost-estimate what this kind of disruption really does, both from an economic and, you know, business disruption kind of point of view, but also reconstructing something, you know, with cost escalation? The Bay Area is a very special place to try to build anything, and I don't know how much you've, you know, gotten into the scales of what it really takes to take care of the place after there's been real damage.
We haven't gotten that deep into it, but that's one of the things that we need to do is not put this back on the shelf, but work on continuity of operations that need to happen, and what's that going to take from a disaster? And look at what other agencies do and take that information and probably expand on it.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there are like comparable environments or something that give you a little bit of a starting place.
Yeah. That's one of the next things we're going to work on is how do we recovery plan, basically, was one of the questions that was asked also by the council, actually, having those in place. There is one for EOCs when you operate and how you recover and get back online, but what do you do really from a disaster and how you continue that? Continuity of operations will be one of the things we try to get more details on and have that information, I think.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pedro. This is a lot to go through, so I really appreciate you summarizing it. One thing I was curious about is that I saw climate change as number two on the list of hazards, and then looking through some of the high-priority actions, there wasn't a whole lot that stood out to me that was specific to that, given how highly it was ranked overall. I think it's embedded in a few of them. But one thing I wanted to ask about specifically is around air quality. So this comes up in the context of fires, which is separated from climate change, and I think those two are actually, you know, very overlapping at this point. And so I don't know what level of comment to put this at in our recommendation, but I think it would be interesting to look again at how air quality resilience or adaptation measures are included in this. And I think that gets back to the previous Commissioners' comment about underserved or vulnerable populations, because the solutions for bad air quality look really different whether you're in a home versus not in a home. And some of this probably falls under the purview of the Air Quality Management District in opening cooling centers or clean air centers. But I wonder if there's anything that, there is a role for Emeryville to play in either raising awareness about, you know, sort of what the options are in the case of bad air quality, or doing some more proactive outreach to make sure that residents have a plan in place? Because I find often what happens is that people are struggling. They're like, oh, where's my air filter if I have one? Did I replace my HVAC system filter? And then there's people who just don't have any of those options, who are arguably more vulnerable to start with. So just one thing to think about and consider and see if it's addressed properly in the, in the plan.
Definitely, we can look at that. And we do participate in when there is like a cooling center needed with the county that triggers that. We, as the city itself, will put out information if our quality gets above a certain level, especially for programs and services that the city offers also. So we're also monitoring at the same time, just because then school district will do it for programs there, but we also for our programs to have like after-school and childcare, to make sure we consider that. So that's definitely on the back of our minds when we work on that.
Let me just last come on that. There was something about replacing smoke detectors in homes, and you could kind of think about this in the same way. It's like if we're going to be replacing smoke detectors in homes, what can we be doing to also, you know, prepare people to have that cleaner when they need it in their home if possible?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? All right, then. It is 8:30. I'm opening public comment, and do we have any speaker cards? We do not. Seeing no members of the public in the room, it is 8:30, and I'm closing public comments and bringing it back to deliberation. Any comments from Commissioners? Sounds like we don't have any comments from Commissioners. Thank you again so much for your presentation. Barring any last-minute items, I'm going to go ahead and close this item. Thank you so much. All right, that brings us all the way to Commissioner Comments. Does anybody have anything to say?
Welcome to the Commission, Commissioners. What a meeting to have.
Anyone else? Okay, I will just say, leading up to this, like, first full meeting as Chair and seeing that one of the world's largest corporations was making a proposal, I was a little bit stressed out, and then I remembered I had a bunch of fellow Commissioners, and I didn't have to have all of the right questions. So I really want to appreciate everybody for their work tonight. All right, and with that, barring any other comments, it is 8:32, and this meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.